Good evening, everyone. It's February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody. This is the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we're calling the meeting to order. Can we have the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes.
Good evening, Father. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize the responsibility to the past and the future, as well as all the rights and needs of both the individual and our community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings in our deliberations and in our efforts here today. This we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Mayor Rossdeck?
Present.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Here.
Commissioner McGinn?
Here.
Commissioner Brooks?
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. Next, can we get approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Rossdeck?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. We have any proclamations? I don't see any. Next, presentations. We have the Gulf Beaches Rotary. And Mayor and Commissioner, as they walk up, I would like to introduce members of the Gulf Beaches Rotary Club, Mr. John Marr, Larry Butterfield, John Doctor, Dennis Fagan, and Larry Loon. Turn it over. Sorry, Larry Bruttag. There's like five Larrys. Sorry, Larry. And I'll have John Marr to proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. John Marr with the Gulf Beaches Rotary. As you may or may not know, we have a carnival each year that the city is our fifty percent partner in. It's here at Rock Park, and it's from this year, May the fourteenth through the seventeenth, and traditionally, it's always around that time. And I'm here tonight to present the proceeds to the city of their half of the earnings, the revenue from our carnival. Again, we appreciate the city's partnership, especially Jay Hatch, and obviously, Robin Gomez is a member of our club and a big part of it. Every year, it gets a little more and more interesting. And again, this year, we're having fireworks again, and we're having several bands that are popular locally, so we hope y'all will come out and visit with us and see our setup and see how we do it. But again, it's a great partnership with the city, and we've done it for, I believe, seven years here in Madeira Beach. So, it's a great setup, and again, we appreciate it. Here's our check. That's twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
I don't know if y'all want to come and get a picture made with us, or...
You guys. Yeah, come and stand in front, and I could have the Commission stand up and be there in front of the mayor, and Andrew's going to take your picture here in a moment. Hold the check a little higher.
Want to do a couple? One, two, three, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Next up is public comment. For anything that's not on the current agenda, please come up. Please come up. We'd love to hear what you have to say.
Hello. My name is Charlie Rehner, born and raised Floridian, grew up in the Keys. My father was a fisherman since nineteen fifty, fished out of Key Largo, Key West. I currently have a fish house in Key West. It's been there since nineteen ninety. And I think in about two thousand and six or seven, they did a lot of changes in the fishing regulations, which stopped us from catching a lot of grouper in Key West. Made most of the boats move to Madeira Beach, few out of Cortez. So I came to Madeira Beach, which is considered the grouper capital of the world, and I bought a fish house, Triangle Seafood. There were several other fish houses around. Also bought a boatyard, Snug Harbor. I think the boatyard had been there since the thirties and forties, and I think the fish house was built in the seventies. I've got numerous boats that fish for me. We feed over a million of people. We produce a lot of seafood out of this area. I've got about two hundred families that make their living off of my property, and I've invested a lot of money up here. I've invested seven, eight, nine million dollars in property and renovations. I've invested five or six million dollars in longline boats, and eight or nine million dollars in grouper quota, so we can feed the American citizens that don't get grouper, because the fishery is a, fishing is a dying fishery, as you all know. There once was fish houses all over. There's not very many left. And in the last five years, I have been persistently hounded. I've had the Pinellas Sheriff Department called on me, the City of Madeira Beach, the Fire Department, the FWC, the Coast Guard, Department of Environmental Protection, EPA. Hundreds of complaints, hundreds of complaints. I bought current buildings that were here that was working, making money. I didn't build this fish house in somebody's backyard. Somebody built houses in my backyard, and now they're trying to throw me out. And sooner or later, I need some help from y'all to stop this, because it is getting out of hand. It is out of hand. I've got sheriff's people coming to my property, looking at a sheen on the water, telling me that it's an oil spill, and I have the Coast Guard show up five minutes later and say they don't even know what they're looking at. A fuel spill is red, an oil spill is black. A sheen is a sheen. You can go to any public marina and you can see a sheen. Madeira Beach, all the way down, all these beaches, when the road, when it rains, the water drains off the road, drains to right into the basins, I've watched it numerous times. Tons of oil goes down in there, and I get called on time and time and time again. This week, I had enough. I trespassed your mayor. I don't want him on my property anymore, and I want y'all to step up and do something about him trying to put me and my fishermen out of business. It's out of control. I've hired an attorney, and whatever we got to do to fix this, we have got to fix this. He cannot move in this town and run everybody out. That is not right. And I'm just asking you all to step up, put it on agenda, whatever we have to do. I have not had one fine for an oil spill, have not had one fine for an oil spill or a fuel spill. I have had them in my yard over three hundred times in the last five years. I've had inspectors come in and tell me I've got the cleanest boatyard in the state of Florida, but yet I still got a man walking on my property, taking pictures of stuff, trying to get me in trouble. That's not his job. That's a DEP's job. Let them come. Let the Coast Guard come. If there's something in the water, the Coast Guard will come. I don't need a neighbor of mine taking pictures every single day and calling me. And please, stay off my property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there any other public comment for items that aren't on the agenda? Please come forward. We'd like to hear what you have to say.
So I'd like to make a request while the person who came up to the, to speak, if we could have this on a future agenda, a workshop, so that we could talk about the roles of the Commission and the things that we are held to, and have a discussion about the fish house and the issues that are arising from there, so we could talk about it openly.
Absolutely.
Because we can't talk about it independently, so I think it would be a good discussion for the public as well.
I agree.
I also agree.
Sounds like a plan. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. We have two items there. The BOC regular meeting minutes and the BOC workshop meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I reviewed them. I didn't see any issues. I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second. All right, City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Rossdeck?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is public hearings. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four oh one. Is that City Clerk?
That's mine, Your Honor.
Okay.
Mayor.
City Attorney.
So I'm going to read this ordinance by title only. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash zero one, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for municipal election on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for the purpose of providing for one charter amendment, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County canvassing board as the canvassing board for the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four municipal election, providing for polling places, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash zero one by title only. It was first read and approved on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. There have been no changes to the ordinance since it was first read.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Do we have a motion?
We need a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is there any public comment on this? Okay, public comment's closed. All right, now.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash zero one.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Rossdeck?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is ordinance two thousand and twenty-four zero three.
I'll read this ordinance by title only. This is ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash zero three, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, creating section sixty-six dash seventy, provide duties of vehicle operators to actuate parking meters and amending section sixty-six dash seventy-two to provide for additional limitations on parking and city parking lots and beach access easements in chapter sixty-six, traffic and vehicles of the code of ordinances, providing for conflict, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash zero three by title only. The City Clerk has handed out tonight the strikeout underlined version. For some reason, it did not carry through when it was put on the city's website. So I wanted you to have that in front of you so that you can see what we've added to this ordinance. So I don't know, Robin, did you want me to cover it, or did you want to do that?
Yes, if you don't mind.
So in this ordinance, first of all, in reviewing the city's code, it wasn't absolutely clear that there was a legal requirement to pay a parking meter fee. So we wanted to make it absolutely clear to make sure that there was no challenges to it in the future. So this is a proactive move to update your code to make it a little bit clearer. So we've created this section in the code, and that's what this ordinance is doing, that sixty-six dash seventy that specifically provides for a requirement that if you're going to park your car in a regulated parking space, that you're going to pay the meter. So that you can see, you know, the additional provisions in that that would basically clean up that issue. In addition to that, while we were looking at it, we determined that sixty-six seventy-two was not really clear on a number of different parking violations that we have been issuing citations for, and so we've cleaned that up a little bit, too. We've added some additional provisions in this section of the code to make it absolutely clear when you're doing these types of things, like parking in front of a driveway, double parking, parking too close to an intersection, and so on. Those also are set out in the code. So that's what this ordinance is attempting to do, clean up the code and add a provision specifically requiring the payment when you're in a parking space. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Jamal's not here. No, okay.
And just to add to that, we have had in almost every year, the city has, well, historically has adopted an ordinance where we identify any changes to our fees and the rates that we charge for a variety of services, including for parking. So that has been in existence for years, including the hourly rate that is charged, including what the penalties are or the violations for failing to pay or parking improperly or parking in a disabled space. That has been in an ordinance. When we look back through our code, it just wasn't overly clear, as Mr. Trask stated. So this will clarify. This is very clear. So as I've shared with all of you, individuals who claim, well, it's not listed anywhere that I have to park in between the lines, but why did I get a ticket when I parked three feet into the next space? Well, so this is making it a little, much clear, concise, and while it will not alleviate all the appeals or concerns, it gives us just better language to apply.
I'm just curious, was it, were there incidents specifically that prompted us to do this, or was this just work, reading and trying to...
Well, reading through, but I have shared with you the last couple of weeks numerous examples of and where individuals were very, very, very boisterous about, I should not have received one. Again, it's not listed anywhere that I have to specifically park in a space. And within the, within a marked space, all of our parking spaces that visitors utilize are marked, meaning they have lines on both sides. And again, it was just not according to several folks. Well, it's not as clear as it could have been, so now it will be.
I assume Jamal, our parking director, has had a chance to look at this?
Yes, yeah, we reviewed all this, yes.
He just walked in.
Oh.
Yeah, no, parking reviewed it. We're the ones that kind of looking through the specifically violations, parking violations, tickets that were issued. That's where, when we started to look a little bit more into the language, that we determined that we need to make this a little bit more clear, just as we have by making it more clear or clearer out in the field, by adding, I think we've added about almost two hundred signs in the past year, just to make it much more visible that, yes, you do have to pay when you pull into a heavy tourist area such as John's Past Village. So in making it just easier, better, more visible, this is where we realized we could make it a little bit, again, just a little bit more clear.
Do some of these points apply to the very few places where we have free parking on the streets, like driveway, I assume driveways and end of the corner sort of, it applies to that as well, is that right?
Right, right. You can't block a driveway, you can't block an intersection. You cannot...
High trams, et cetera.
Yeah, right. Yeah, some specifics. You cannot park in a manner that obstructs a public, access to a public facility, so a mailbox or a trash bin, for example. And that would be in our residential areas where you would need a, well, in areas where you both need a permit to park, but even if you don't need a permit to park, if you're on Crystal, Crystal Drive, the idea is that you don't park directly in front of someone's mailbox the whole day. Your mail will still be delivered, but the idea is that's where we could issue a warning and/or a violation.
Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Pretty soon, I'm going on a ride along with Jamal and our parking director. If you look at page three, ordinance two thousand and twenty-four dash oh three, zero three, number four, I'm just going to listen real quick, number four, number six, number ten, thirteen, and sixteen. All of those have been violations that I have witnessed right here in Madeira Beach. Jamal's doing a great job of enforcing it. I would like to see if we can get some copies of this, so that when we do the ride along together, we can help educate the people that are not up to the ordinances, and hopefully, we can pass those out. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Good idea.
City Manager, you were citing the parking over into two spaces. I don't see that addressed in this ordinance. When you're, when you're parked over the line, am I overlooking something?
On page two, the bottom, and I'll bring it up on the big screen as well, after section, it begins with section six-six dash seven-two, limitations on parking in city parking lots and beach access easements. It's number one, all vehicles must park within designated metered spaces. And number two, no part of the vehicle may extend beyond the limits of the marked parking space.
Okay, I was overlooking that. Is, you say that we have two hundred signs. Do any of the signs include any of this information?
Not current, not currently. No, the majority of the signs are reminding that you must pay to park. So they're in our visitor, our metered spaces, which has been historically the only area in parking that the city was enforcing. Prior to more than, a little over a year ago, there was very little enforcement in neighborhoods. So what we were discussing, parking in front of a, in front of a mailbox or in front of a driveway, we really weren't, our parking enforcement was not driving around and looking for those types of violations. But we can certainly add additional signage saying that, you know, you must park within the marked space. I think a lot of those are, those would be considered just a given or the common sense when you do pull into a marked or metered lot that you do park in between the lines, but...
It actually already says that.
Yeah. So I mean, right, the current ordinance includes that language, but I mean, we can add, I mean, we're, I'm open to adding any other signage to encourage that, but it's just, I mean, there aren't any signs that say, you know, we've had cars parked perpendicular in a spot. So we, you can think it, it's happened. So how much signage do we put out?
I get all that. I'm just, um...
Hold on, Jamal, grab a microphone. There's one right in front of you. Or come up to the podium. But the biggest violations are people failing to pay or continuing to pay, and parking outside of the marked lines. Those are the, those are the two biggest citations that enforcement issues.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Vice Mayor. Yes, so we've, we found good use of like decals as well that can be placed on any sign, pay to park sign, that's compact and visible, reflective, and those are relatively cheap to make. I utilize that for the extension of vehicles over eighteen feet, so RV parking, so that's a good idea as well to place decals if, like sticker decals on meters, signage.
Something specifically about staying within the lines.
That would be...
Or you will be fined. You know, fines apply to, you know, you can...
Right.
Wordsmith it to make it as short as possible, but...
If we want signage out there. I mean, I, there was some reflection on disputes, within disputes, people stating that, well, it doesn't say that, as you, as you guys discussed, doesn't say that with stay within the lines, but as Robin stated, it's self-explanatory, I mean.
Yeah, but we can add, as Jamal said, we have, he reminded me, we have added certain decals in certain lots, like no vehicles greater than eighteen feet, and no backing in, you know, you cannot back in park, because then we may not be able to see the plate. So we can do, I mean, I'm sure we can add, Jamal's very creative and...
Yeah, we all want to just avoid disputes.
Absolutely.
And that, you know, I...
Yeah, you're right.
We don't need more signs, but maybe we do, you know, and the decals are a wonderful idea.
Yeah. Yeah, and working with Megan, she's, she's not as enthusiastic as like putting a bunch of signs everywhere, but if we can come back, you know, combine two in one, yeah.
If you can figure out some sort of decal on the bottom.
Keep it clean. She likes everything very clean, so I respect that, so...
So do I.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. We just want to make sure there's no confusion.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Public comment. Would you like to comment on the park? Please come up, sir.
Bill, you probably hear me from right here. I speak pretty loudly, being in the military. I'm a retired military disabled person. Each time I ask about the parking spaces down at Madeira Beach, I seem to get a different answer. So can you tell me on a disabled placard, what is the policy of parking at Madeira Beach?
If you have a valid disabled license plate, you can...
No, I don't have, I have a placard, as I said.
The one that you hang from?
When you hang up on the mirror.
Right. If it's valid, you may park in any marked city space for free. You do not have to pay.
Thank you. That's what I'm trying to confirm. Thank you very much.
That is also listed on our website. Any other public comment on this? All right, we'll close public comment. And then this is the first reading. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand and twenty-four oh three.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. City Clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Rossdeck?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
All right. Next up, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Agenda Item nine C. The, this is, the actual agenda item is two COP alcoholic beverage license application, two thousand and twenty-four dash oh one, for Osaka Japanese and Thai restaurant of Madeira Beach. This is a quasi judicial hearing. I need to go through the process that we would normally go through in a quasi judicial hearing. First of all, the applicant is Osaka Japanese and Thai of Madeira Beach. The address of the property is six ninety-six one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. A summary of the application is that the applicant is requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners for approval of a two COP alcoholic beverage license for the sale of beer and wine for consumption on premises at Osaka Japanese and Thai Restaurant of Madeira Beach located at six ninety-six one hundred and fiftieth Avenue here in Madeira Beach. The standards to be applied, I'm just going to quickly read those. They're set forth in section one, ten dash five thirty-two. When considering an alcoholic beverage application, the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors. Number one, the extent to which the, the location and the extent of which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Factor number two is the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Factor three is whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it's proposed. Factor number four is whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. And the last factor is that no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. Under section two dash ten of your code, the burden of proof is as follows. The applicant shall have the burden of proof at the hearing to show by a greater weight of the evidence that the application is consistent with the city comprehensive plan and complies with all procedural requirements of law. Conditions may be suggested by the applicant. The city or any party may be, I'm sorry. Conditions may be suggested by the applicant, the city, or any party may be, I'm sorry, the city or any party, or may be imposed by the board, which are intended to assure consistency and compliance. The identity of the parties are just the city and the applicant. There are no notices of intent that have been filed for people to become affected parties. The order of presentation will be, normally it's the applicant first. Since there is no person other than the applicant, the city will go ahead and present first. So I think Mr. Morris is going to do that. I'm gonna go ahead and read the quasi judicial procedures. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At this hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider the evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet that criteria, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Is my time up?
Yes.
Apparently. Said too much.
So at this time, mayor and commissioners, I need to ask if there has been any expedite communications with the applicant?
No.
I'm seeing no. Any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed?
No.
No. And at this point, I need to go ahead and swear on the witnesses. Mr. Morris, you're gonna testify. Is the applicant here in the audience tonight? Okay. So, Mr. Morris, if you could raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you're about to give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you could go ahead and turn your mic on so we can hear you and go ahead and proceed with the application.
I'm gonna start with the background section of the memo pursuant to land development code, article six, or division six. Alcoholic beverages applicant for ABP 2024-01 is requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners for the approval of a two COP alcoholic beverage license for the sale of beer and wine for consumption on premises at Osaka Japanese and Thai restaurant of Madeira Beach located at 696 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach, Florida. Establishment is located in the C3 retail commercial zoning district. The future land use designation for the property is Commercial General. Pursuant to section 110-539, the notice of public hearing has been properly sent to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property 15 days prior to the scheduled consideration by the Board of Commissioners. Such notice has also been posted to the subject property at the Gulf Beaches Public Library, City Hall, and the City of Madeira Beach website. When considering the alcoholic beverage license application, the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors. The first one is the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcohol beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Permitting Osaka Japanese and Thai restaurant of Madeira Beach to serve beer and wine for consumption on premises would not adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. The existing neighborhood is mostly commercial uses. It's in the shopping plaza with Publix and Slice. Within the past five years, there was previously a sushi restaurant, Hinata Japanese Steakhouse and Seafood at this location was previously approved for the same type of two COP alcoholic beverage license back in 2016. The extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Previously, a restaurant with a two COP alcoholic beverage license was located at this location. The minimum parking requirements of this property exceed the requirements of section 110-971. Additional traffic congestion should not be created by the proposed alcohol use. The proposed alcohol use doesn't create, present a safety hazard. The next set of criteria is whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. The proposed alcohol use is compatible with the location. Other businesses in the shopping center also serve alcohol such as Slice Madeira Beach, which is another restaurant within the same shopping center. Whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety, public safety should not be adversely affected by Osaka Japanese and Thai restaurant in Madeira Beach serving beer and wine for consumption on the premises. The restaurant is more than 300 feet away from any established church, synagogue, temple, or place of religious worship. Public or private school operate for the instruction of minors or youth recreation community center. The 300-foot requirement is the minimum distance required usually for bars and clubs, and this is classified as a restaurant. But I did measure where the restaurant was located on the property. It's more than 300 feet from the school. Just the double check it. The last set of criteria is no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. The applicant has no outstanding fines or penalties owed to the city under any section of the code. Staff recommends approval of ABP 2024-01. Attached to it is their local application for the city. I include their, it also has their lease agreement with the shopping center that shows that they expected a tenant would have like a beer and wine license, their state application that, and then their floor plan and the public notice mailing and posting for this application.
Are you asking that year, this entire agenda package be received into evidence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the commission to Mr. Morris?
I have just one. Looking on page 53, this is public information. We have a social security number here. I'm not so sure that we should have that.
That is correct, mayor. We'll go ahead and black that out. And if it's on the website, we'll go ahead and remove, also black it out on the website.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Being no questions from the commission, then we can go ahead. The city has no other witnesses, so is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address this issue? Yes, sir, if you could stand up and speak into the microphone. Hang on, sir.
He moved to Park Boulevard. He's been, I've been, been at that restaurant for the past probably 15 to 20 years. I just wanted to surprise him this evening because I live 300 feet from the restaurant. I live at Sea Towers. My building is the Washington building, and I can look from my building right on over there where it is located right there, the public shopping center next to the, next to the nail salon. But I just wanted to surprise him this evening, but I guess he did not show up. And it's one of the best restaurants around, I've gotta say that. Best restaurant around. He's back to the location of Madeira Beach, where he'll do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you for your opinion and also thank you for your service, sir.
Anyone else from the public would like to step forward? Yes, sir, step forward, please. State your name.
Yes, sir, my name's Brian Nebe. I live in American Legion Drive. So I'm one of the five Key West houses that's closest to the restaurant. And we are also excited that they're coming to our neighborhood. So everybody on our street is very happy, so wanted to let you know that as well. Thank you.
Glad to hear that. Anyone else that would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, mayor, it's back to the commission then for consideration and approval of the application?
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license application, 2024-01 for Osaka Japanese and Thai restaurant.
I'll second. Well, thank you kindly. City clerk, we call a roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is unfinished business. Do we have any? All right. Next up then is item 11, contracts and agreements. Field internship agreement with SPC. I guess that's chief?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. This agreement is with SPC and it's basically just letting, you have to do so many ride times when you're in paramedic school and they're gracious enough to allow our firefighters to do it while they're on duty. That way they're, they don't, they're not taxed with such a time crunch trying to schedule it with other departments when we're doing exactly what the other departments are doing. So this is basically just an agreement that we need to enter into with them to allow our firefighters to be their preceptors.
Okay. City attorney, do we need to make a motion to, and vote on this?
Yes, mayor, we do.
Okay.
The staff is recommending that the field internship agreement be approved.
Okay. First, is there any public comment on this? All right, public comments closed. Commissioners? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the field internship agreement with SPC.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is RFP 2023-11, the digital information sign purchase.
Mayor and commission, this item, as Mr. Crabtree presented during the workshop, is to accept staff's recommendation to proceed with the low bid and proceed with the purchase of the sign. Brian?
That is correct. And I'd like to address Mr. Kerr, Commissioner Kerr here. I did speak with the visit, St. Pete Clearwater, and there is a possibility of some funding for that. So we'll see what goes forward with that.
That's awesome, Krabby, I appreciate it. Now, if we go into this agreement prior to an acceptance, any grant offered, is that a problem?
I wouldn't believe so because any grant that I've ever got or written, you pay and then you get reimbursed by the grant.
So we could move forward? Great, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments? Is there any public comment on this? Okay, public comments closed then. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I think we went over this pretty well during the workshop, and I think it's a great idea. I'd like to make a motion to approve the RFP 2023-11 digital information sign with I2 visual.
I'll second.
Thank you kindly. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up is purchase the 2023 Chevy Silverado 5500 regular cab, two-wheel drive.
And mayor and commission, this item, which was also discussed at the workshop, is part of our capital budget and, capital budget in our public works department to proceed with purchasing a 2023 Chevy Silverado 5500 regular cab that will be replacing a 2004 Ford F-550. This new one will be the chassis for the DuraLift bucket truck that we use for various purposes across several departments. We had budgeted $75,000 for the replacement. The cost for the vehicle per the, I think the, whether we piggyback with the city of Tallahassee or the state of Florida, purchasing yielded a price of $54,880. There will be some additional costs, but will not be more than $20,000. We're waiting to see what the cost will, what the total will be, but it'll be under the $75,000 budget once the chassis is fabricated to the bucket, to the lift. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners?
Just so I understand, you're gonna reuse, repurpose the bucket portion?
Correct, yes.
And put it on the new chassis?
That's correct.
Any other commissioners? Is there any public comment on this? All right, thank you. Do we have a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2023 Chevy Silverado.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Mayor, before we do that, I just wanna make sure, the motion only includes the purchase of the truck, and I think that maybe you would want to include in the motion up to $20,000 for the refab to put the, whatever that thing is.
The body, the body on the chassis.
So I just wanna make sure we get it all done at this meeting, so.
I'd like to add to my motion to include and not to exceed the $20,000 to cover the switching over the parts from the current truck to the new truck.
Thank you. I'll second. All right, thank you. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini, I mean. Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
All right, thank you. Did we get everybody? We missed somebody?
I missed McGinn.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
Oh, it's five to zero.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up is the fireworks agreement. Jay?
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Just bringing back the fireworks contract per our last discussion. With this contract, proposed contract, we would have four dates for fireworks, which would be March 16th, May 4th, July 3rd, and November 9th. I know the hangup last time was trying to secure a barge for the July 3rd date. At this point, we tentatively have a barge. I have to find out, finalize details for that, but we have a local business that offered up a barge of a certain size and the, it's all verbal at this point as far as whether or not we can use it. He says we can use it. We have the ability to get the show in that way, would be allowed to relocate here. We're just trying to iron out the final details of what that would look like. But that's where we stand with that right now, so. The fireworks distributor that we have previously used is interested in making sure that that happens, and then July 3rd being the date that was most likely for him to be able to help us out with. If it was a 4th of July date, there's challenges with the barge loading in and all that stuff, so we would have to go to the other location. So that's why we suggested July 3rd and then the other three dates align with other events that have taken place, so.
Where would the barge actually, where would be shot off before when it was on the barge? Was it still relatively in the same area or was it more central to the city?
Mostly put it in the water between Rock Park and the American Legion. It would be, if you drew a straight line, it's typically just north of that. So we stay out of the channel, make sure that we have a large enough fire radius for it, safety radius, which includes probably moving those boats out of it because the barge allows us to use much larger ordinance, which means bigger booms essentially, so. But yeah, just right here off the point.
It's not really more central, it's just closer to the city. Instead of the school, it's closer to-
Right, it gives us, this is our largest viewing area as far as it goes. You'll still be able to see them just as clearly from wherever else around town that you have. Putting it at the school unfortunately cuts off the view of a lot of folks on the other side, just the chunk of folks just right, am I trying to say here? On the north side of town, on the other side of the bridge, there's a small area over there, but then the American Legion viewing, they also, traditionally in the past, they've helped sponsor it as well. That's a discussion we haven't had quite yet, but part of that is being able to view it and it actually puts them directly behind the Marriott when we move it over there. So we take one of the largest military organizations out of view of the fireworks for 4th of July. It was unintended consequence of the issues of the barge. And then it frees up the school for parking. They typically like to use that for parking and that gives us more viewing there for anybody that wants to drive in or come over. And then the other part of the third was that traffic with the sheriff's department. It's easier for them to obtain the necessary staffing to make sure that it's secure, get people on and off the island, as well as have a boat on site for the show with the barge.
Can you flip your mic over so everybody can hear you? I think it's facing the wrong way.
No, this one's not.
Are you on the other one?
It's not working.
It's just not working that well. But it doesn't, I guess where I was getting to, it really doesn't aid in better viewing from Boca Seaga area or- Seaga area or any... It's still going to be this general area, it's just a little closer to here.
Correct, yeah.
Because this is historically your largest viewing area.
I'm sure you've already asked this question. We're approving the agreement with Master Pyro LLC. They know about this barge and they're... They can use it. It's a barge that you're not used to using? Is it a different barge?
Correct. He is aware of it. We... Long and short story, called him, said, "What are we looking for? What are the requirements you need?" Previously, we needed a much larger 30 by 90, which is a huge barge. Those are the ones you see the cranes on, like on the bridge. We're looking at something more that's 20 by 40, so much smaller, and then they can utilize a remote detonator so they don't have to... Previous fireworks, somebody had to sit on that barge with the explosives.
So with this barge, they can do it remotely?
Correct, yes.
And is there any chance that we wouldn't get this barge? And if so, does Master Pyro have an alternative plan?
We have other phone calls out. We're exploring other options just in case. The barge that we have now is a local company, so there shouldn't be any issues with it.
So we're just approving the agreement with Master Pyro? This is not a guarantee that we'll have the barge, but it looks good, is what you're saying?
Correct. This is the first step in lining up the necessary items to do so.
Got it, thanks.
Correct, yep.
So July 3rd with a barge, bigger fireworks. Or July 4th? No. July 3rd with a barge, bigger fireworks, and school parking to provide better parking for all of the people who would otherwise come to view the fireworks. Or July 4th at the school, probably less smaller show, not as visible throughout the community as getting it in the waterway out here, wherever there is. Would that be a good assessment of the...
Yes. And then there was the minor issue last year with the sideboard fireworks.
Right.
So I have the owner of the company, main technician, that would be here on July 3rd, and that's his big guarantee for everything, too.
I think from feedback that I've received year after year, even before I was on the commission, just listening to residents speak, getting the fireworks back out in the bay, in the waterway between us and the Legion would... I'm sure it won't make everyone happy, but there are a lot of people who really want it to go back to the way it was, and they don't like the school. The view's blocked for a lot of people, and I think if we could get it back on a barge would be fantastic, and residents would be very pleased with that.
Other Commissioners?
I'm fine with it.
Is there any public comment on this? Okay, do we have a motion, then?
I move we approve the 2024 fireworks agreement with Master Pyro LLC.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you kindly. City Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Okay, new business. Tampa Bay Coastal Master Plan.
Mayor and Commissioner, we received a request from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council for a letter of support for a plan and study that they will be performing called the Tampa Bay Coastal Master Plan. We are requesting your approval to submit that letter of support for the project. It's not going to cost us anything, but simply showing that, yes, we would like to partner and with their study that I think we'll be looking at a variety of components related to living on an island at the coast regarding everything from obvious flooding, storm preparation, transportation, emergency management, et cetera. So that's the staff request to submit the letter. I believe a copy of the letter is in the packet, and I know we have a... I'm sorry, it's in the mayor's folder. And Commissioner Brooks is the city's representative with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. She's been attending meetings and very much providing what our issues, our... What we're looking to get, obviously being a member of it, and we certainly appreciate her time, energy, and attendance and support for our city with the council.
So I'd like to share a little, if I might. When I first... When we had the vacancy and needed someone to participate in this council, I started attending. They had... We have meetings every other month, and in the very beginning, I felt very much like a fish out of water going to the meeting, just not really kind of like you do when you get elected to the city commission. And it has... The council has had some involvement within the council. They've made changes. One of the new things is a community liaison. There are a lot of things that this council will do in working with our planning and zoning department in so... There's so many different avenues to utilize them for grants, for just all kinds of things. And this past week, we had our meeting for this month on Monday, and our representative... We were assigned our liaisons this week, and our representative is here, and maybe she'd come up and introduce herself. We are going to be scheduling a meeting with myself, her, Robin, and the planning and zoning department so that we can see how we can best partner with the regional council to be able to utilize them for our city in getting the things that we need. And if you'd like to introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Jamie Neville. I'm actually the disaster recovery coordinator for the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. I also do their economic impact analysis on a few different topics around the region as well. And yes, I will be y'all's liaison, and really, our goal at the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council is to do regional planning, figure out y'all's needs, and figure out if there's any way that we connect our federal partners with grants to get those needs moved forward. And I can give y'all cards afterwards, and y'all can contact me about anything regarding the TBR PC and any needs in general, and if I can't help you, I know somebody else on our team can. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that I was early this week by an entire hour, even though my calendar said to be there at 10 o'clock, my brain said to be there at nine, and the benefit was there were a group of the employees that were early also, and we got to talk about a lot of different things. And one of the meetings that I... We were at recently where the boat that travels around and does the advertisement in the water, they were talking about water quality tests and USF. So I was able to get a little bit more information on the lack of water quality tests in Boca Seaga Bay, and some information on how to possibly get that moved forward in starting some testing with the residents that have had complaints over the years, and especially our discussions recently on all of the boats that are out in the intercoastal. Getting something moved forward to be able to test that water and show where our water quality is there, different times of the year. We all know that in the summer, the water is dirty; in the winter, it gets really clear. It's the winter, summer, whatever, and so it's a pretty exciting organization, and I see us really being able to utilize them a lot in the coming years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is all great news. When I saw this on the... In the agenda, it was like, I had no idea there's so much that this could bring to Madeira, the city of Madeira Beach, so I'm very excited for it. Anything we can do to support, you know, the partnership, I'm going for.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, we want to make a motion to sign this letter?
It would be a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the letter, yes.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize signing the Tampa Bay Coastal Master Plan letter.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, may we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGeehan?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be staff reports. All right. Next up is agenda setting for the BOC workshop in February. We've got the list there. Purchase the Kubota Mini Excavator, City Hall Satellite Office, the RFI 2023-14 Coastal Groin Restoration Bid Discussion, Johns Pass Village Activity Center and Zoning, Tampa Bay Beach's Chamber of Commerce Check Presentation, and then the master plan.
Mayor, this item C... Sorry, item D, is this one of the... Is this considered one of the public meetings to have discussion on this? Or is there something new going on?
It's just to give the what's been happening, just the continuation.
Just an update on what's going on?
And we will have... The county will be discussing the item at their February 20th meeting.
Right.
So we will provide an update as to what that transpired.
Thank you.
Could we add to this meeting the discussion of the Fish House?
Yeah, what you requested, yes.
I would like to move that to the following month. Depending on... I'm going to meet with the city attorney and the city manager. Depending on the presentation, I could do a three-hour presentation on the pollution and how the environment has suffered the last several years with all kinds of documentation. So all depends on what you want to do. It's going to take...
The request was to have it at the next meeting, but it's up to all of you. I mean...
I mean, I understand a presentation, but I'd like to just have a discussion on what our role as the city commission is, and I'd like to have a discussion because we can't talk about it outside of here. So we can sit up here and talk about it, and it could be a small discussion. It may be a big discussion. The opportunity for people to come and speak to it.
Okay.
I think it would be important, given the number of complaints that one resident has received, or one property owner, I think it'd be a good idea to discuss.
Okay.
So if I'm understanding correctly, it's more of the board's role in this type of dispute?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Next up, reports and correspondence, board of commissioners. City Attorney, I know you had something for us.
Yes, Mayor, I've got three things I just want to go over. I know that I've already provided you with some documentation relative to the two lawsuits that have recently been resolved, or at least resolved with a possibility of appeal. I want to talk to you about the schooner litigation, which is the Burke RIS, is the city of Madeira Beach. On February 1st, the appellate court issued an opinion that appeal brings the last Burke case to a conclusion unless there is an appeal, a further appeal. They have 30 days in which to do that. The appeal time would run on this latest case that the city was successful in would be March 4th. So if there's no appeal, those will be final. So that is something that's beneficial to the city that that Burke litigation is almost over. In addition to that, I want to let you know that the Second District Court of Appeal has issued a ruling in the William Gay versus Hendricks, Andrews, Hodges, and Price. All Commissioners, prior Commissioners of the city of Madeira Beach, Mr. Gay had filed lawsuits saying that there was a violation of the Sunshine Law in the hiring of me and our law firm. The city was successful in defending that case as well. The opinion was a PCA opinion, which basically means there was no written opinion. If there's no written opinion, there is a very high likelihood that there will not be a further appeal, but that appeal time is 30 days, and so it will run also in March. That will be on March 8th. And most recently, in that same case, Mr. Gay had asked for his attorney's fees to be reimbursed by the city, and that motion was denied by the court. Lastly, I issued a memorandum to the city commission relative to the fire station litigation. It's my understanding that there is a mediation coming up, and the attorney representing the city will need some direction from the commission. And so, under Florida Statute 286011 Part 8, you have the ability to have what we call a shade meeting. It's really an out-of-the-sunshine meeting. And the way that works is I have to request it at a public meeting. That's the purpose of this conversation right now. I'm requesting that there be a shade meeting for the purposes of... Or providing strategy relative to case settlement. The shade meeting has been tentatively set up for February 28th at 4:00 p.m. It's two hours before your next meeting. I think that the shade meeting will take about an hour. Those that will be present will be here, the city commissioners, the city manager, myself, and the attorney representing the city. I did receive responses back from the majority of you saying that it was clear in your calendar. So knowing that, I've already received that approval, I wanted you to know that I have already called the court reporter, and we have scheduled the meeting for February 28th at 4:00 p.m. That will be in the shades conference room. You'll remember, we start the meeting here, and then we'll retire to that meeting, have the shade meeting, and come back here to close this public meeting. So those are the three things that I needed to go over tonight, unless you have other questions. Thank you.
Sorry, one of the time and date of the shade meeting?
February 28th, 4:00 p.m.
4:00 p.m.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, do you have a report for us?
I have it attached to the agenda. The city manager has his under there. Our report goes under where the charter officers are.
Okay.
And then they have a place for the staffs, so it's on there, and I threw a little bit of history in there again, so you'll get an opportunity to look at that.
Will do.
A reminder to everybody, the election's coming up. We have the charter amendment on there, and we also have the swearing-in of the Commissioner Kerr and Taglerini for a new two-year term, and that will be on March 28th at 5:30. And we're going to have a light reception starting at 4:30 in here. So to me, it's a big event, and we appreciate everybody. We appreciate the commission, and we appreciate Commissioner Kerr and Taglerini serving another two years.
All right, thank you. City Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, just to go over some of the highlights in the last couple of months, as we typically have every month, just provide an overview of some of the city operations. We continue to remind, obviously, our residents of a variety of different activities, events, everything relating from the trash collection, the yard debris collection, which is every Wednesday, to reminding folks that they do need to return their trash containers, recycling containers by the night of the date of collection. Also, various methods that residents can reach out to us. We remind folks that they should sign up on the city's webpage for... To receive emails from the city. Those emails provide updates on upcoming meetings, on special events, on a variety of different activities, so that's on our... And I'll get to it here up on the big screen, but on our webpage, on the homepage, anyone can scroll all the way down to the bottom of the page, and under a tab listed Help, there's a word, Subscribe. You click on Subscribe, and that will bring you to the ability to enter your name and your email address, and then you will receive considerable amount of updates from the city via email. We also put out, obviously, an abundance of information via Facebook, on the city's website, et cetera. An update, we finally... We did have in early... Late December, early January, the county's contractors completed the sand dune restorations in front of Archibald Park and approximately about 700 feet to the south in front of the Ocean Sands condo towers, and then one property to the north, and that included the plantings. So we have now... City staff have now... So we have now, city staff have now cordoned off that area with posts and ropes and signs encouraging people to please stay off the dunes. The plants are growing despite that it is the winter, and we've had a considerable amount of, of wind and another flood that happened toward the middle of December, encouraging people to continue to stay off those dunes. So that is greatly appreciated, so that they do take hold. We will be looking to return the Mobi Mat, the mobility mat that was previously out there on the beach access, I guess we can call it. There are four beach accesses or walkways at Archibald Park from the parking areas, the, where the concession is out to the sand, and the second one from the north, if you're going north to south, that is the one that had the mobility mat, and we will be looking to return that as soon as the walkway is a little bit more compacted. We were given some specific direction by Pinellas County to leave the sand as it was placed by the contractor and not level it out just yet. The reason, so that the plantings on both sides take, and that the dunes are, for lack of a better term, properly shaped by the, by the weather and the elements. So once, we hopefully can add it in March. I know we, I've had probably half a dozen folks ask, you know, when is it coming back? It's a little bit of a deterrent. Said, we're working on, hope to have it back within a month to six weeks. I did remind folks that we did not have a mobility mat prior to, a little over a year ago, it was added. But in the interim, because three of the three access points, the three southern ones have the hump, we can call it, the fourth one or the northernmost one, which is the one that is, the wider one that is accessed by our vehicles, that one has leveled off. So it is much easier for folks with disabilities, and we've even had some of our, our concessionaire out there at the snack shack let folks know, hey, tell them, direct them to that access point. It's, it's level. It's not, not the most ideal, but at least it is level for folks who may have a need to, some disabilities to be able to get on it. So that's, we'll hope, again, hope to have that in March. And just a few updates on our, some of our projects that are listed in, in the reports. Our building department with the new software that was added this past year for all thing, to submit a building permit application. The software is called MGO. It does have the ability, anybody can go and register, you just need to put in your, your name and a valid email address, and then you will get back a confirmation to that email address. That gives anybody access to the system, and right now, just by typing in an address, it'll bring up the permits that have been issued to that specific address. We are meeting with the contractor next week to go over. It needs to be tweaked or refined because it's not as easy to register for it. You, there are a couple of screens that you have to navigate through. For somebody who's computer, fairly computer savvy, it'll be easy, but I, I've had to go, it took me an extra, I mean, about two or three minutes to figure it out. So not that I'm that computer savvy, but I'm also not a novice. So we're going to work on it, tweak it, and make sure that it is super easy. You click, it'll take you to a search page, or it'll take you to the page to register if it absolutely has to do that. Again, that's just a name and a valid email address. And then hopefully the next, once you've received that confirmation, you'll be able to go directly to a screen that will take you to a search. And you type in an address, and it'll bring up the, if you want to look at whatever permits have been issued for that specific address. So it is out there. It's working. Obviously, for anybody who needs to file a permit, I have heard nothing but that how easy it is to file a permit. I have yet to hear, not that I'm on it or speaking with people every single day, but I've probably had 30 to 40 users who have told me that it is fairly ease, very easy to use it. So again, if there are, you know, if you encounter anybody who may have any questions on it, please direct them to our building folks down in the first floor specifically, the Holden Pinkard or, or Barb Scott, and they will get them all squared away. Other than we, I would appreciate those of you that did attend, obviously, quite a few of the events in the last couple of months, from our holiday events to, in January, the library had a grand reopening and event to kind of, a little fundraiser, and obviously to, to open their time capsule. We continue to promote the, the library and the activities that they have, and just remind folks that it is a very good resource out there. They do have a notary. They can teach folks how to use a computer, not to mention that they have computers available. And, and their hours are a little bit later than City Hall because we have a tablet available at our lobby that we are directing folks mainly for parking, and there's also one on the first floor, by the way, a laptop that is accessible. But the library has multiple computers, and they're open until 6:00 p.m. during the week. On some of our projects, the, at the next workshop, we will hear an overview from Public Works about the firm that we are looking to choose. We received nine bids for the beach groin work to begin the restoration, the refurbishment of the 22 groins. So we will hear that at the next meeting. We did receive all of the permits. The reason we got finally to the advertising and soliciting bids, the Johns Pass dredging, we're still, we're hopeful that within a month or two, we would receive the permit from the, the final permit from the Army Corps. And then that, once that does happen, that process will move very quickly because the actual work, weather pending, will take no more than a week to, to physically dredge the area that needs to be dredged. So it will move very, once we get to that point, I've been sharing with folks that two years to get a permit to do a weeks to two weeks' worth of work. But unfortunately, that's a part of the process. In both months' report, you'll see data for our building department, our parking, our marina revenues and, and activity that has occurred. I do want to point out that our, I mean, our building permit activity continues to, really to steady, it hasn't declined, and, which is good news, that there still continues to be a lot of, a lot of, well, both development and redevelopment, but certainly a lot of folks, you know, taking care of their property. Our, and the marina as well, the, the marina does have some ebb and flow in their activity. Of course, when the weather's not so good, you don't have as many people going out on their boats. Consequently, we're not selling as much fuel, sundries, or other items out of the marina. However, obviously, people are using their slips, and so some revenue stays constant throughout the year. Our parking has seen a bit of a decline in revenue, approximately about 11% through the first quarter. That's attributable a little bit to the weather. We have, we are not seeing a decline in visitors, though. The data that we've received from, the data that is available at Visit St. Pete Clearwater, the number of trips through both airports, even Port Tampa, there is a segment of, obviously, the visitors that come to Tampa Bay that go on cruises. A lot of them will, you know, fly through one of the airports and then go to Port Tampa. They are also tracked as visitors to the area, but they have seen an increase in the number of visitors going through there. What we believe is happening for our parking is a combination of just fewer people actually driving their own car, so they are, or renting a car. They are relying on ride shares to where they are staying, as well as, obviously, when the weather is bad, we're not having day trippers. So our day trippers do, they, those are the ones that you really see a huge difference when the weather is obviously not as, as good. But we'll keep monitoring that. We're still well above the pre-COVID year and even above 2021, a third of the way through the year. And just keep an eye out for upcoming events. As you heard earlier, in March, we do have the four-day carnival. We have later, a few cleanups that happen every month. In later, next Thursday through Sunday is the start of our college softball games, a series, where we, this year, we will have about 20, I think, 27 colleges and universities play approximately 75 softball games at our three fields out here at Rock Park. That begins on the 22nd, and then continues through the first two weekends in March, right before the carnival. And one other pretty neat day is on Monday, March 11th, we have kite day. So folks who want to come out and fly a kite, bring the family, we've had upwards of 600 to 700 people out here at Rock Park in front of the rec center, and of course, we're hoping that that's a windy day, which a lot of days are windy here, and they seem to be this year more than last year, that we've seen a lot more wind. But that's on Monday, March the 11th, and plenty more events coming forward. So please, I encourage folks to sign up, if you haven't, on the city's website to receive our emails. Lots of good information in those emails. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Do you know what the balance is on the extra 50 cents in parking that's going towards our next parking garage?
We just exceeded, we're right at $1 million, I think.
I can look that up and get to you in about two minutes.
Uh, yeah, so I didn't include that in the.
Just curious, with all the parking revenue information?
Yeah, recall, it's pretty close to a million.
That's close enough.
Which is the, again, the additional 50 cents when we increased the parking, the hourly parking rate from $2.50 to $3. And I think I've discussed, at some point this coming year, we will discuss our, that same hourly parking rate. For your reference, our, both of our neighbors to our south have increased their rates. Treasure Island is at $3.75 an hour, with the exception of the lot adjacent to their community center, that is at $3 an hour. And St. Pete Beach has gone to $4 an hour. On Saturdays and Sundays, they are at $4.75 an hour. So we are, we are still the lowest of all parking from 150 Third Avenue all the way down to the tip of Passag grill. The city of Madeira, Madeira Beach has the cheapest parking rate at $3 an hour.
Now we just need more spots.
Coming soon.
So we passed.
Thank you.
We passed, I believe, just a resolution to segregate 50 cents for parking meters for debts, for future debt service, and then also, and then another 50 cents for the parking garage. I think you asked specifically on the parking garage. The parking fund was created in 2023. Through September 30, 2023, we had $477,000 reserved for parking meter, for parking garage. Now through today, it's 586,000. But we also accumulated monies in the general fund before we had a parking fund, and those monies in the general fund were, I think, 400, let's see. $400,770. So take 586 plus 400, you're almost at a million.
Almost at a million.
Dedicated the parking garage from those parking meter fees.
It's a great down payment.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, it's 7:23 p.m. We're going to adjourn at this time?
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day, everyone.
Valentine's Day, everybody.
Thank you.